Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America under our Constitution and the Constitution of Justice.
Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. We'll begin with the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. There is a request for a change of Order of Business this evening. Under Administration and Finance, I'm requesting that we add Item F, Abatement Hearing Date.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the amended Order of Business with the addition of the abatement hearing There are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the amended Order of Business.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion on the amended Order of Business? Hearing none, all in favor of the amended Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners wish to discuss? There are no items on the consent agenda. Open for discussion, I would look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move into Administration and Finance. Our first item is an RFP approval for appraisal services. This will be presented by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. The City of Dickinson issued a request for proposal for professional appraisal services for three city-owned parcels requiring valuation. The purpose of the appraisal is to determine the current fair market values to support future planning and potential land use decisions. The parcels requiring appraisal service include Lot 1, Block 1 of Prairie Meadows Subdivision, which is a 13.29 acres located west of the Dickinson Middle School; Lot 2, Block 1 of the Museum Center Edition, which is, address is 46 West Museum Drive, which is the 1.16 acres the armory currently, our former armory currently sits on; and Lot 1, Block 1 of the Museum Center Edition, address there is 66 West Museum Drive, which is approximately 3.93 acres of land in which the Dickinson Law Enforcement Center is currently located. Two proposals were received in response to the RFP. Each proposal was evaluated based on the following criteria: experience and qualifications, quality and clarity of proposal, cost of services, timeline, references, and past performance. The scoring committee consisted of City Planner Natalie Burcek, Senior Engineer Chris Keller, and myself. After review and scoring, Valbridge Appraisal Services received the highest overall evaluation. Valbridge demonstrated strong qualification, relevant experience with municipal and institutional properties, and a clear understanding of the scope of work. The firm also maintains a field office in Fargo. The scoring committee recommends that the City Commission award the RFP for appraisal services to Valbridge Appraisal Services in the total amount of $14,500 for the appraisal of the three identified parcels. This time requesting the City Commission approve that request.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions on the RFP for appraisal services? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item is the Finance Committee Bylaw Changes. This will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Dickerson and Commissioners. So with the Finance Committee that we have set up for the city, this committee has set up some bylaws, which we have been in there for about two years now, and we need to change some of the terms on that. So we brought it forward in front of the Commission and also for the public, so that citizens that want to apply for being on the Finance Committee know what the terms are. So the first in your packet is the redlined version. So under the first paragraph, under Organization and Membership, changing the title from Finance Supervisor to Deputy Finance Director. It's just a change of title. But then Paragraph Number Three, under Terms, we changed the terms of the citizens from one being a one-year term and the other a two-year term, and we're changing it to be both interested citizens on the committee would serve two-year terms. One would start on an odd year and the other in an even year, and alternating going forward. Before, we had it as it stated, and in the odd year, we would have both of them leaving at the same time. And that just did not have any consistency, and then only being on there one year did not give that citizen enough time to be able to really be involved. We only meet quarterly, and that was only four times. And so this way, that gives them each a two-year term, and then they would alternate with our citizens, starting on, and our, and in the bylaws, it starts as of July 1 and stuff. So this is what I'm asking for, from the Finance Committee, and we would like to change the bylaws to state as, and there is a resolution for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. This is Resolution 48-2025. Are there any questions on the Finance Committee Bylaw Changes? There are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Move into our Chapter 36-25. Our Obligated Structure Penalty will be presented by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Included in your packet is Ordinance Number 1836. Just to reiterate, this is an ordinance that will amend and reenact Section 3625. The purpose of this amendment is to clearly state the penalty for a violation of obliterated structure and junk. It will add the following language: "Any violation of this section shall be considered a Class B misdemeanor." The point of this is to make it very clear that within that section of code, that is the penalty, so that we don't have to refer back to other sections of code for the penalty. So this again is helpful to myself, it's helpful to city staff, and to the public, having that information readily available in that particular section. There have been no changes since the first reading, and city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Winko. Any questions on Ordinance 1836? There are no questions on Ordinance 1836, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item is our Chapter 62-65 Permit Penalty. This is Ordinance Number 1837. Ms. Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Included in your packet is Ordinance 1837. Just for clarification, again, this amends and reenacts Section 6265. This also clearly states the penalty for a violation of a permit regulation. It will add the following language: "Any violation of this section shall be considered a Class B misdemeanor." Again, we are cleaning up this particular section of code and putting the penalty section right within the section. There have been no changes since the first reading, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Winko. Again, this is Ordinance 1837. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have our Chapter 8 International Property Maintenance Code Penalty, Ordinance 1838. Ms. Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Finally included in your packet is Ordinance 1838. This will amend and reenact Section 8-195. This will clearly state the penalty for a violation of the International Property Maintenance Code. It will add the following language: "Any violation of the provision of the International Property Maintenance Code shall be a Class B misdemeanor." We use this a lot in code enforcement when we have to file within municipal court. There have been no changes with, since the first reading, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Winko. Any questions on 1838, the International Property Maintenance Code Penalty? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And this is to the amended F. This is our abatement date. Mr. Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. We did receive notice from the county that there were three commercial properties within our community that did request an abatement hearing. I'm requesting at this time that we hold an abatement hearing on January 6 of 2026, which be, which would be a normal commission meeting date, so it would be held during the, the normal business of the commission meeting. I'm asking the commission to approve that date being set.
Any questions on the January 6 date for the abatement?
It looks like, looks like we're good for the 6th.
All right, we'll move into Community Development. First item up is Chapter 16 Environment. This will be handled by City Planner Burcek.
Thank you, Commissioners. Natalie Burcek, City Planner. So Community Development Staff is requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to Section 16-170 zoning and Section 16-174 distance limitations and spacing requirements in Chapter 16 Environment of the Dickinson Municipal Code to remove language regarding the requirement of a conditional use permit for oil wells. So the intention of these amendments is to align the Dickinson Municipal Code with the North Dakota Century Code requirements regarding permitting oil well drilling that's handled by the North Dakota Industrial Commission, not at the city level. This was previously heard at a public hearing at the previous City Commission meeting. Nothing has changed in the text for this amendment, and Community Development Staff would recommend approval of this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Burcek. This is Ordinance, should be in here, 1835. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have our Baylor Building Bank of North Dakota Loan, a presentation by Senior Engineer Keller.
Mr. President, Commissioners, for your consideration, is a bond resolution for the city to execute solid waste revenue bond, Series 2025, and associated agreement with the Bank of North Dakota for a loan from the Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund. The details are, the loan amount requested is $5 million. The duration of the loan is 20 years with an interest rate of 2%. The bond matures on September 1st, 2045, and the proceeds of the loan will be used for the construction of the Baylor Building. City Engineering, Public Works, and Finance Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Are there any questions on the Baylor Building Expansion Bank of North Dakota Loan? Am I correct, this is a resolution, so we are 49, 49-2025. Any questions or comments? If there are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on Resolution 49-2025.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second, I think Mr. Murphy beat you to it there, Dr. Baer.
That's okay.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion or questions?
I just, on this closing certificate, it's got one of the commissioners wrong in here.
I thought we had had that updated, but we will get that updated from Bond Counsel.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for city staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Engineering, Community Development Administration of Assistant Job Description, and this will be presented by City Engineer Skolaczek.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. For your consideration, is a job description for the Engineering and Community Development Coordinator. This was previously the Engineering and Community Development Administrative Assistant. The pay grade change for this position was approved with the 2026 budget, which is from a pay grade 11 to a pay grade 12. Some key attributes to support the need for the pay grade increase are: prepares and organizes all building permits for the City of Dickinson, which is a large amount of individual transactions, but also a total amount of the transactions is significant. Handles the sales of city-owned cemetery plots and mausoleum crypts and niches, and then handles large amounts of data where data entry requires consistency and accuracy for quality and data integrity purposes. With that, Engineering and Community Development Staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skolaczek. Any questions on this job description for the Engineering and Community Development Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Skolaczek, you have a Engineering Technician Job Description?
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration, is a job description for the Engineering Technician position. This pay grade change was approved with 2026 budget from a pay grade 12 to a pay grade 14. Some key attributes to support the need for the pay grade increase are: completes all, completes some utility and concrete-related inspections, complete all the North Dakota One Call utility tickets. In that case, any mismarks or no marks of any underground infrastructure that the city owns are of significant risk to the City of Dickinson. That could be not only dangerous, but also costly to the City of Dickinson. Completes pavement management planning and forecasting, utilizing our, our City of Dickinson pavement management plan. This is something that's been a, a big cost saver to the City of Dickinson, and something that we previously had been, had been hiring out, and outsourcing was a fairly significant cost. And then completes GIS drafting and data entry for utilities, which reduces time required for future North Dakota One Call tickets and staff time across multiple departments to utilize the map data without having to sort through other data records. Engineering and Community Development Staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions for the Engineering and Community Development Team on this GIS Technician Job Description? Oh, I jumped. Engineer Technician Job Description. There are none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now we'll move on to the GIS Technician Job Description.
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration, is a job description for a GIS Technician. This is a new position for the Engineering Department. This was approved with the 2026 budget for the pay grade of G14. Key attributes to support the need for the, for the position: creating and maintaining geospatial data, ability to assist with completing North Dakota One Call tickets when need be, such as if people are out of the office or using leave time, or there's ultimately a flood of additional utility One Call tickets. Capability of writing script in Python and Arcade, and then develops maps for multiple departments to use to increase their efficiencies. Engineering and Community Development Staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions on the GIS tech position? There are none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Skolaczek, you have a Sims Second Street East to Ninth Street SRF Loan Ask.
Good evening again, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration, is a bond resolution with, for the City of Dickinson to execute the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan through the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. Loan details are listed in the staff memo. The total Drinking Water SRF loan amount requested was $1 million, and the Clean Water SRF loan amount requested was $1 million, for a total of $2 million loan. The Drinking Water SRF loan is intended to pay for the approximate 2,000 150 lineal feet of cast iron water main that was replaced with the Sims project earlier this year, and then the Clean Water SRF loan is, was intended to use for the storm sewer upsizing and then the extension from 2nd to 5th, and then number of sanitary sewer main repairs along that route, as well as relining approximately 2,535 lineal feet of the sanitary sewer main within the project area. Any remaining loan balances carry an interest rate of 2.0%. City Engineering, Public Works, and Finance Staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Skolaczek. Any questions on the SRF loan for the Sims Second Street East to Ninth Street East Project? This is Resolution 50-2025.
Just a question, the, the bond shows an interest rate of 1.5%.
There's a 0.5% administrative fee.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this SRF loan? Now I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Dr. Baer.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. That is the end of our normal agenda. We do have a public hearing at 5:00 PM, so we will take a short recess till 5:00 PM. will take a short recess till five PM. Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll work our way into the public hearing, and the first item in public hearing is the swearing-in of the Youth Commission. And, Mr. Fong, you have a small introduction before, before we do the swearing-in.
Mr. President, members of the Commission, I'm pleased to introduce to you today the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Dickinson Youth Commission. The Youth Commission began in two thousand twenty-one, and it has renewed energy in two thousand twenty-five, and, uh, I'm a former civics teacher, so I've really enjoyed this, uh, other duty as assigned when I was hired this summer. But it's a great group. They represent Dickinson High and Trinity High. They represent grades nine, ten, and eleven in their schools. We don't have any high school seniors, so this group actually could have some longevity in terms of being the voice of the teen population as they bring their concerns and their opportunities to work with you, the elected and appointed leaders within our city. Uh, they've already put on an outdoor, uh, movie night for the public that was very well attended on October third. They were wonderful volunteers at Trick or Trunk in downtown Dickinson last Friday evening, and, uh, we're glad to bring them forward today, and we have many of their proud, uh, parents and guardians in the audience as well. But, uh, they have a duty to uphold, and I think we have an oath ready for them, but, and, uh, Mayor Decker, I think you and I have been, uh, practicing pronunciation of some names. I'm gonna leave that in your hands here, but why don't you call them forward?
Okay, um, we're going to have the, we're gonna do, uh, the whole Youth Commission. If you could please come up, as we've done in the past, every one of you come up to the front here. I state your name.
I am Heta Scari.
Of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office of the Youth Commission.
The duties of the Office of the Youth Commission.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations. All right. Elena Anderson, right here, I'll sign. There you go. Jen, are you?
Yep.
There you go. Cooper Brennan, right here. Noah Alice? Or a lot.
Yeah. Yes.
Or a lot.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. That one locks. Jordan Hamm? Holden Kapari? And a star? Ellie Spradling? And, uh, this one. I have taken and signed them all, but I do know one of you is our duly-elected Youth Commission President. Am I correct? You are. Do you have, uh, a few words or your vice, uh, you and your Vice President have a few words for the, for the Commission and the, uh, Presidents that are here?
Um, Heta, do we have some words?
Well, we can say thank you for all the Commission has done to support us over the years. We're really gaining a lot of traction back, and we're happy to have your support. And thank you to the city of Dickinson for guiding us as we're growing this year.
Mr. President, maybe have each one of them just introduce themselves and
We can, we can.
Name the school they're from and their grade.
All right, let's do that. Uh, so, we'll, we'll work our way down from, uh, President on down, and like Commissioner Frederick said, where, uh, what grade you're in, what school you go to, and anything else.
Yeah, it's good to be here. I am Lorelei Emter, the President of Dickinson Youth Commission, and I'm a proud Titan at Trinity High School, and I am a junior there.
Hi, I'm Heta Scari. I am also a junior at Dickinson Trinity.
I'm Elena Anderson. I am a freshman at Dickinson High School, and I am the Secretary of Dickinson Youth Commission.
My name's Cooper Brennan, and I'm a freshman of Dickinson High School.
I'm Jenna Leia Yuyu. I'm a sophomore, and I'm the publicist for the Dickinson Youth Commission.
Hi, I'm Holden Kapari. I'm the treasurer. I go to DHS, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Ellie Spradling, and I go to Trinity High School.
I'm Hensley Strain, and I'm a junior at Trinity High School.
I'm Noah Iles, and I'm a junior at Trinity High School.
I'm Jordan Hamm. I'm also a junior at Trinity High School.
I'm Adele Fox. I'm at Dickinson High School, freshman year.
All right, well, welcome aboard, and, uh, you know, we've heard a lot of great things so far that you guys are planning, so we're looking, uh, forward to next year, big plans for next year. Uh, two thousand twenty-six is gonna be a big year for, uh, Dickinson, and I, I'm sure you'll have something going on this winter for us too, to have a look at, so, thank you so much, and welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Okay, we'll move into the public hearing for Chapter Six Ordinance Amendment, and this will be presented by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. Included in your packet is an ordinance for consideration that would amend Section six dash eighty-one of Chapter Six of our municipal code. Uh, the reason for this amendment is to clarify some additional language, uh, within the code section. Currently, uh, the code prohibits, uh, the raising and keeping of animal and domestic fowl or livestock, um, except as permitted in zoning ordinances of the city, Chapter sixty-two, at zoos, at schools, clinics, or other laboratories for recognized educational, scientific, or re- research purposes. Uh, there has been some issues that have arisen, uh, within the enforcement, uh, realm of this particular code section, uh, and there's been some, um, need for clarification because the Chapter Six and Chapter sixty-two don't define what a school is in the typical sense, uh, and so we've got a situation that has arisen where, um, homeschools have become a situation, and we've got, um, residents that are seeking to have these animals in homeschool situations. And because the code does not clarify exactly what is defined as a school in the typical sense, the point of this clarification is to make that clear, that we're not including that in the typical sense of a school like we would at Dickinson Trinity, DHS, or Dickinson State University, or any other, um, elementary school of, of some sort. So, uh, the added language in that, that we're proposing, uh, for, again, for clarification purposes, uh, for the purpose of this section, school does not include a homeschool operating out of a private residence. Um, and, again, for clarification purposes, so should we need to enforce this, it's unequivocally clear that that does not apply in that situation. Uh, and I would stand for any questions that any of you have.
Thank you, Ms. Winko. Am I correct, this is ordinance eighteen thirty-nine? Any questions for City Attorney Winko or city staff on this Chapter Six Ordinance Amendment? There are no questions from the city commission. I will open up the public hearing. If anyone wishes to come forward, please state your name. Let us know your concerns, questions, or comments on our Chapter Six Ordinance Amendment pertaining to chickens and, uh, the definition of what a school is. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns? Seeing no one from the public has any questions or concerns, I'll close the public hearing on Chapter Six Ordinance Amendment. Commissioners, any further comments or questions? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President?
Dr. Bear?
I have a question. Ms. Winko, I, I have a question regard, regarding, um, this with service animals. I under, now, I, I know that's by the law, but, like, um, one of the things we, League of Cities brought, one of the, one of the, um, seminars I went to talked about miniature ponies, so they would not be included in the, is that correct?
No, this, this has nothing to do with that. Uh, this, we're, and we're not changing the language with regard to the keeping, raising of domestic fowl or livestock. Um, certainly, if someone has a service animal
Yeah.
Uh, that would be something that we would look at as an exemption through ADA or some other, uh, federal requirement.
Right.
This is not that situation. This is a situation where someone, uh, in a private residence, uh, who is seeking to homeschool their children has several chickens in their backyard.
Right.
That, that's the situation that we're referring to. Um, if there was, uh, a situation where someone came forward and said that it was a service animal of some sort, we would obviously look at that, uh, and request documentation on that to determine whether, you know, we could move forward.
Right.
But, that, that's not that situation.
Okay. Not that I've ever seen anyone have a, a service miniature pony, but it is in the, it's
It is.
It is stated there.
It is very, um, it is in the ADA, yes.
Okay, and, and the other question, what, what about, like, pot-bellied pigs?
Those are excluded.
Those are excluded.
And, and again, we're not changing anything with regard to that. The, the animals and the domestic fowl and the livestock that are excluded now remain excluded. Uh, so I just wanna say that again for clarification for the, the, the public. We are not authorizing chickens in the city of Dickinson. That's not what this does. We are just going one step farther in clarifying that chickens are not allowed in a homeschool type of situation or arrangement. It's at a school setting like we would typically and normally take it in the common sense.
Okay. I just want that for clarification.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Mr. President, I've moved to approve.
All right, we have a motion approved by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
As being a member of the homeschool community, I vote no for segregating homeschool from school.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That is it for our public hearings. In public comment section, there's no one that has been signed up this evening. Commissioner comments, anyone? No Commissioner comments, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.